We'll start our meeting tonight. We'll start with Mr. Richards and then we'll do a pledge and Mr. Williams do a prayer. In my stand. Attention, salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, that's great. Father, we do thank you for a beautiful day. Thank you for the opportunity to live in this country and to be a part of this system, be a part of the lives of these children. Thank you for all our teachers and all the support and all the work that goes into making our system successful. And I pray that you will give us wisdom today and help us to make the right decisions. May everything that we say and do honor you tonight. We pray in Jesus' name.
If everyone's had a chance to look at the agenda, if there's any changes, please
open up. If no changes, we have a motion to approve the agenda as submitted. All right, Mr. Williams makes a motion. Mr. Pepper says, in discussion. All those papers out. I have those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not. You have a chance to look over the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented? Make a motion. Mr. Richards makes a motion. Mr. Pepper says, in discussion. All those papers out. Aye. Those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not. Motion carries. All right, the school financial statements, general fund like reconciliation, we have a motion to approve. Make a motion. Mr. Williams makes a motion, I have a second. Mr. Wood says, in discussion. All those papers out. Aye. I have those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not. All right, bills and accounts. Have a motion to approve the bills and accounts. Make a motion. Uh, Mr. I'll give it to Mr. Wood, makes a motion. Mr. Williams says, in discussion. All those papers out. Aye. Those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not. Motion carries. All right, we have Ms. Wayne Briggs with us. Wayne, we're glad to have you. Come present the audit to us.
My name is Wayne Briggs and I'm with the Department of Examiners of Public Accounts and I'm here to present the audit report for the period of October 1st, 2014 through September 30th, 2015 in accordance with Act 2006 of 196, Act of Alabama, which is the School of Fiscal Accountability Act. We conducted our audit in accordance with audit standards generally accepted in the United States of America and the standards applicable to financial audits containing government audit standards issued by the House of General of the United States. Those standards require that we plan to perform the audit to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free of material misstatement. An audit includes examining on a test basis evidence supporting the amounts of disclosures in the financial statements. An audit also includes assessing the accounting principles used and significant estimates made by management as well as evaluating the overall financial state of presentation. And we believe that our audit provides a reasonable basis for our opinion. Our opinion is an unmodified opinion on the governmental activities and an unmodified opinion on each major vote. Also, as part of obtaining reasonable assurance about whether the board's financial statements are free of material misstatement, we performed tests to its compliance with certain provisions of laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements, noncompliance with which can have a direct and material effect on the determination of financial statement or mails. However, providing an opinion on compliance with those provisions was not an objective of our audit and importantly, we did not express such opinion. The results of our test disclosed no instances of noncompliance or other matters that are required to be reported. In addition, we also audited the compliance of the board with compliance requirements described in U.S. Office of Management judge circular A133 that were applicable to each of its major federal programs for the year end of September 30th, 2015. In our opinion, the board complied in all material respects with all of those requirements. Also concerning the board's major federal programs, we noted no matters involved in internal control of compliance and its operation that we consider to be reportable conditions or material weaknesses. There were no findings in the audit report and if you would like to see a copy of it, you can seek one at our website at wwwexaminers.alabama.gov.
Thank you, Ms. Briggs.
Thank you.
I'm sure she'll take questions if anybody has any questions for her. Lee? I'd like to appreciate, you know, Anthony and the staff and Mr. Taylor for the good job. I think this is a few years on road. We've had very clean audits with no findings and so that goes to the leadership of the superintendent and the chief of finance officer. Any comments? If not, we'll go to the bids.
I'll look real quick at ours, four A and four B. CMP has a couple of bids, a bread bid and a produce bid. Four A, I was reading real quick, CMP bids for fresh bread products opened 11:00 AM, June 29th, 2016 for upcoming school year. The bid requests were sent to Sarah Lee. Flower and Flowers Distributing Company, this bid may be renewable up to the same terms and conditions as the original bid and the option agreement of both parties to additional one-year period under the War Better United Security Consumer Price Index following cost of following year. Lowest bid was Flowers Baking Company at $7,4,892.60. $66.60, I'd like to recommend we approve that bid.
Chief, pardon my next recommendation. Make a motion. Mr. Wood makes a motion, I have a second. Mr. Williams says, in discussion. All those papers out. I have those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not. Motion carries.
Second page will be produce bid. They were mailed to Forestwood Farms, Regional Produce, Dixie Produce, Osborne Brothers, Woodbrooker, Rockford Brad's Jr. Produce, French Produce and TNT Produce. The bids were received from Forestwood's and TNT only with the lowest bid being in TNT and I'd like to recommend we approve that bid.
Chief, pardon my recommendation, we have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Pepper makes a motion, I have a second.
Sir.
Mr. Williams says, in discussion. All those papers out.
Aye.
Those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not. Motion carries. Do you want to just do all the resignations together?
Tonight.
Yeah, just do eight, do the day and then we'll do the other. Ethan, you say.
I'd like to recommend we accept the following resignations. Brian Cloud is English teacher and head football coach in duties across from High. Darla Johnson, pre-K auxiliary, Henniger. Chris Hammond, agri science teacher, Valley Head. And Chad Cox, assistant custodian, Collinsville.
Chief, pardon my recommendation, have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Pepper makes a motion, I have a second. Mr. Wood says, in discussion. Those papers out.
Aye.
Those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not. Motion carries. I think he did.
I'd recommend we accept the following retirements. Kenneth Abernathy, senior, 12-month maintenance employee facilities. Wayne Ledbetter, 12-month maintenance employee facilities. And Paula White, psychometrist, annex.
Chief, pardon these recommendations. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, I have a second.
Sir.
Mr. Wood says, in discussion. Those papers out.
Aye.
Those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not. Motion carries. Go ahead and do all of these assignments.
Okay. I'd like to recommend the following these assignments, Ms. Donna Stroud, Nurse Ruth Hamon, Victoria Griffin, English flag was ours teacher at her. And Mira Espinoza, transliterator across from middle.
Chief, pardon my recommendations, we have a motion. Mr. Wood makes a motion, I have a second.
Sir.
Mr. Wood says, in discussion. Those papers out. I have those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not. Motion carries. Any other?
I'd recommend Ms. Tiffany Halfacre for transfer from itinerant special ed bus aid to five special services to itinerant special ed aid across from Lowry.
Chief, pardon my recommendation, have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Pepper makes a motion, I have a second. Mr. Wood says, in discussion. Those papers out.
Aye.
Those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not. Motion carries.
I'd recommend Tammy Taylor, itinerant special ed teacher, Moonlight, to transfer to itinerant high school special ed teacher at five.
Chief, pardon my recommendation, have a motion.
Make a motion.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, I have a second.
Sir.
Mr. Williams says, in discussion. Those papers out.
Aye.
Those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not. Motion carries.
I'd like to recommend Laurie Morgan, elementary teacher, Ruth Hammond, elementary teacher, Henniger.
Chief, pardon my recommendation, have a motion.
Open.
Mr. Wood makes a motion, do we have a second? So if anybody has a good save, they can.
Okay.
I'll say. Mr. Williams says, in discussion. What about, I don't know, sometime back maybe before you got here, we used to, the superintendent or the board, if it was an in-house school decision, unless there was money change, it never came before the board. If it was a regular school, the principal just assigned people from different areas. Do we, do we still do that?
I don't know that that'd be a good practice going from special ed to, I think that was the most.
Well, I mean, I'm just asking you this.
Yeah. I, I, I think that, I know the situation you're talking about, in-house transfers as long as it's regular ed teachers is a local decision with the proper notification.
Yeah. Any other discussion? One of the, one of the absolutely favorite players, is this, is this the question for recommendation?
It is, Tom.
Is there, is there any other discussion?
Is, is, if you, I think, do you have a specific reason? I think this is especially, I don't.
I've, I've known that this young lady that I recommended has been asking for a transfer for six years. I bet she has nine or 10 years experience. There was one other with one more year experience that as far as I know of, this is the part of the year she's asked for a transfer. The lady that I'm recommending drives some very good waves from Savannah to Rahama every day and been doing that for a good while. With the other situation, especially a teacher, those are really hard to replace. If we move Ms. Morgan, I've got a lot of elementary candidates that should be easy to replace. We've also made provision that if we do move her, we've done an emergency post and we'll be able to replace her tonight if we go ahead with this transfer.
Any, any other discussion?
Has, has, has Ms. Ginn said anything about special ed is kind of hard to find right now? Or do we have other openings for special ed?
We do. We've had, I think she's had some struggles building those spots. And if she's here, she's, I don't mind her speaking if she wants to.
I happen to have a few extra applicants, not, that's usually not the case, but, you know, it's getting close to school starting, so I may have some problems, but I don't have that for sure. I do have some applicants, whether they're what we want or not, I'm not sure yet.
I know there were several, several people wanting, wanting more special ed, but that's not going to be an option. Any other discussion? All right, call for the both. Those are papers out.
I will.
And I will. Those opposed, not.
Aye.
None is happy. This is my case.
I'd recommend Doug Haines, secondary English teacher at Plankview to itinerant D L L teacher at Plankview.
Chief, pardon my recommendation, have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Williams makes a motion, I have a second.
I'll say.
Mr. Pepper says, in discussion. All those papers out.
Aye.
Those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not. Motion carries.
Recommend Summer Lingerfield, elementary teacher, Crossville Elementary to elementary teacher at Plankview.
Chief, pardon my recommendation, have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Williams makes a motion, I have a second.
I'll say.
Mr. Pepper says, in discussion. All those papers out.
Aye.
Those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not. Motion carries. Sorry about that.
Recommend Gina Q, instructional coach for the system to make teacher at Plankview.
Chief, pardon my recommendation, have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Williams makes a motion, I have a second.
I'll say.
Mr. Pepper says, in discussion. All those papers out.
Aye.
Those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not. Motion carries. Sorry about that.
Recommend Gina Q, instructional coach for the system to make teacher at Plankview.
Chief, pardon my recommendation, have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Williams makes a motion, I have a second.
I'll say.
I'll give that to Mr. Pepper.
I'll give it to Mr. Wood.
I almost gave it to Mr. Wood, but I'll give it to Mr. Pepper. All right, do we have any discussion? Those are papers out. I have those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not. Motion carries.
Recommend transfer of Stanley Williams from P E teacher at Crossville Middle to elementary P E teacher at Plankview.
Chief, pardon my recommendation, have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Williams makes that motion now. I figured Mr. Pepper would make that a second. In discussion. I think this is good and it's, it's not good for a coach to be at a, at a different school so unwilling to make this transfer.
That's good.
Any other discussion? Those are papers out.
Aye.
Those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not. Motion carries.
Recommend transfer of Ms. Tracy Groper from elementary, elementary teacher at Henniger to itinerant E L teacher at Savannah.
Chief, pardon my recommendation, have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I give that to Mr. Richards, Mr. Wood will say, in discussion. Those are papers out.
Aye.
Those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not. Motion carries.
Recommend the transfer of Mr. Cameron Mitchell, agri science teacher, Geraldine to agri science teacher at Valley Head.
Do we have a motion? And Mr. Wood makes a motion, I have a second.
Sir.
Mr. Richards says, in discussion. Those are papers out.
Aye.
Those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not. Motion carries.
Recommend the transfer of Mr. John Allen Poe, man teacher at Plankview to virtual school teacher for the system.
Chief, pardon my recommendation, have a motion. Make a motion. Mr. Wood makes a motion, I have a second. Mr. Pepper says, in discussion. Unless any, unless any discussion, yeah, in the cars of virtual school to sign up for, for where he's staying. And what's our?
I think we have 30 applicants as additional.
And one, one thing too is that I know with the 20 that are in current system that'll be, what do you call it, blended, that, you know, without, without this, we actually may lose some of those. And you're, you're not necessarily gaining on those, but you could be losing on. So, I know the county commission made this morning, they accept, the county accepted a streamliner, a blessing, a donation that we, that we give to this program, so it'll cost us a lot of money to do that program. But anyway, any other discussion?
I think we're doing our ides into jumping up the board. That buzz is going to be, it's not a little bitty bait.
Any, and I know that, you know, this is, this is kind of a new position, so can you kind of elaborate on how we ride it down?
Well, I think I'll let Brian give him his cross. One really did the interview, but this Brian's been over technology.
Brian, do you understand?
Sure. So, when we did that, when we interviewed the applicants, our goal was to find somebody who one had some virtual experience, somebody who had some technical capabilities, was also a teacher who could lead others, could organize and orchestrate a very big project. So we had some really good interviews. What stood out about this particular applicant was his experience in virtual, he already does online courses at his school and also with his college more basic reteaches. And he also had an interest in growing with the program. And since this is very new, we want somebody who's going to stick it out, but is going to be switching out every so often, a really deep person, a person who's going to kind of stick with us and grow through the, the minds of the program and do whatever it took to get it up and running. So we're very excited to have somebody who's that excited about virtual education and he had a true love for virtual education and that's, that's kind of why he kind of stood up from out from the other.
Anybody?
We have very many applicants.
We had about, about 10, 12 applicants and we tried to serve.
All over the county? I think it was all over the county.
Some, some were in system. We had a couple that were retired that, that also expressed interest.
All right, if there's no other discussion, those are papers out.
Aye.
Those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not. Motion carries.
Recommend the transfer of Ms. Rebecca Griffin, elementary counselor at Savannah to itinerant diagnostician for the system.
Chief, pardon the recommendation, we have a motion.
Make a motion.
Sir. Was that Mr. Richards made a motion? Mr. Williams says. Yeah, this one, this was very difficult for me. I, Ms. Griffin is, is an excellent applicant for whatever position and she will be sorely missed at Savannah, but Ms. Ginn, I have pretty good employment there. Any, any other discussion? Those papers out.
Aye.
Those opposed, not. I, I'm, I'm, I'm a, I'm a baker's family. Let's go on the next, if it takes.
I'd like to recommend transfer of Ms. Megan Lay, elementary teacher at Henniger to itinerant instructional coach for the system.
You've heard a recommendation, have a motion. Mr. Wood makes that motion, I have a second.
Sir.
Mr. Williams says, in discussion. Those papers out.
Aye.
Those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not.
Recommend the transfer of Shane Stewart, elementary teacher at Collison to itinerant elementary special ed teacher at Collison.
Chief, have the, you've heard a recommendation, have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Pepper makes a motion.
Sir.
Mr. Richards says, in discussion. Those papers out.
Aye.
Those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not. Motion carries.
All placements made are needing background review and may be subject to criteria and free of, through extraneous appropriate certification. I'd like to recommend Mr. Jacob Brown, elementary teacher at Collison.
Chief, pardon my recommendation, have a motion. Mr. Pepper makes a motion, I have a second. Williams says, in discussion. Those papers out.
Aye.
Those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not. Motion carries.
Recommend Mr. Tracy Hogan, secondary history teacher at Collison.
Pardon the recommendation, have a motion. Mr. Pepper makes a motion, I have a second.
Sir.
Mr. Richards says. Is this the Coach Holden that used to live?
Yes, that's why I is. I just can't stay awake, can't.
Any other discussion? Those papers out.
Aye.
Those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not.
Recommend Lindsey Farrell, elementary teacher at Crossville Elementary.
Chief, pardon my recommendation, have a motion. I'll make a motion. Mr. Pepper makes a motion, I have a second. Mr. Wood says, in discussion. Those papers out.
Aye.
Those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not. Motion carries.
Recommend the employee elementary teacher at Crossville Middle.
Chief, pardon my recommendation, have a motion.
I'll say.
Mr. Pepper makes a motion.
I'll say.
Mr. Richards says, in discussion. Those are papers out.
Aye.
Those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not. Motion carries.
Recommend Brad Bruce, P E teacher at Crossville Middle.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Pepper makes a motion, I have a second.
Sir.
Mr. Williams says, in discussion. Those are papers out.
Aye.
Those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not. Motion carries.
Recommend Billy Jones, secondary math teacher at Crossville High.
Do we have a, have a motion? Mr. Pepper makes a motion. I have a second. Mr. Wood says, in discussion. Those are papers out.
Aye.
Those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not.
Recommend Caleb Will, secondary English teacher at Crossville High.
Chief, pardon my recommendation, have a motion. Mr. Pepper makes a motion, I have a second.
Sir.
Mr. Richards says, in discussion. Those are papers out.
Aye.
Those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not. Motion carries.
I'd recommend Sandra Lou, secondary math teacher at five.
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion.
Mr. Pepper, I'll be Mr. Richards makes a motion, I have a second.
Sir.
Mr. Williams says, in discussion. Those are papers out.
Aye.
Those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not. Motion carries.
Recommend Stephanie Faulkner, secondary English teacher through this one school year, is a leave of absence in Georgia.
Chief, pardon the recommendation, have a motion. Mr. Richards makes a motion, I have a second. Mr. Wood says, in discussion. Those are papers out.
Aye.
Those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not. Motion carries.
Recommend Ben Johnson, agri science teacher at Georgia.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, I have a second. I'll say, Mr. Pepper says.
This, this is principal recommendation.
Sir. I think you'll do a good job in there. Any discussion? Those are papers out. I have those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not. Motion carries.
Recommend Steve Cofield, intervention teacher at Plankview.
Chief, pardon my recommendation, have a motion. I'll make a motion. Mr. Williams makes a motion. I have a second.
I'll say.
I'll give that to Mr. Wood, says, in discussion. All those papers out.
Aye.
Those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not. Motion carries.
I would skill Adam Hill, business transfer not going through, so Adam Hill, I'd like to recommend Witten, itinerant special ed teacher at Valley Head.
Chief, pardon my recommendation, have a motion. Mr. Wood makes a motion, I have a second. Mr. Williams says, in discussion. Those are papers out.
Aye.
Those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not. Motion carries.
Recommend Russ McCall, welding instructor at the career tech center.
Chief, pardon my recommendation, have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Williams makes a motion, I have a second. Mr. Wood says, in discussion.
Been a lot of talk about this position that we gave, tests was given at the Texas school, they raided them. Dr. Mr. Higgins, we miss him, he's gonna, he's doing well and appreciate what he can. I have a lot of respect for him. His, my son went through his class, he's like a father figure. Anyway, Jonathan, do you think that Mr. McCall can do the job?
I believe he can.
Is there, let me ask his question. Is there a reason that we chose the recommendation for Mr. McCall as opposed to the other two applicants?
We, we were very blessed to have a great number of applicants who were highly qualified. A lot of great welders came forward and that says a lot for Mr. Higgins' program. That says a lot for our welding program at the Texas school. Each one of these individuals probably due with a set of yields, and Mr. McCall has to figure, Freeman and some of the others, it was in part a place of very, very talented welders, probably at the time, to the table play. But I feel comfortable with Mr. Richards, whether or not he's going to help.
Well, let me ask you the question here. Did Mr. Higgins, did he, did he do Jalen Roman?
Yes, sir.
Did he have an associate's degree or what?
Yes, he sure does, yes, sir.
Does he, any other discussion?
Did you recommend Mr. McCall?
I didn't give a second. I'm bothered.
I was just another thing I want to talk about, I did. Mr. Title, what, give us your take on the reason that though, you know, I know the other, there's a couple other scored a little higher, certain thing than Mr. McCall.
All three of the top three that finished in the test, finished very high. As a matter of fact, all three were offered a job by someone that was in the industry. I don't think any of the three would have been a great addition and an asset to the system. But we have had, I think, multiple phone calls from Dean Gray, so we're going to be concerned over getting someone that can do the Jalen Roman. And Mr. McCall was of the top three, was one of the ones that was already certified to be able to do that through his associate's degree that he had. So, you know, that was the direction we wanted to go in, I think he just felt like he would fit. The other two candidates could have gotten the degree, it would have been later on that we would have had to make some arrangements to try and do the Jalen Roman. It would have cost classes a lot, I think either, and Mr. Higgins was very gracious to offer to do that free of charge, but this will fix our problem if we go with Mr. McCall. But I think any of those three would have done a great job, but it just so happened that he had a slight edge with the degree to do Jalen Roman.
Did you talk to Mr. the other two? Did you, did you talk to Freeman, the other guy?
I did, I did.
Jonathan, you talked to him?
He did all this.
The only, the only other, the only other thing I would add is that we, are we confident that, I know we hire younger people to do bridge capers. It's a little different with the skilled position. I mean, you'd like to have somebody who's, who's got a little more time on the way up to do the skills, is that, is that something that was considered?
Yes, sir. We, we spent a lot of time thinking about this, because we want to make, we want to do it the right way and we want to be best in the program, the best pursuits, first and foremost. And there were a lot of discussions among all of us, most of our community, and there were a lot of time in every foot and toe. And we looked at every angle we could possibly.
Understand that he filled every, Mr. Higgins, I'm offering tickets allowed, is that, did you observe him?
Yes, sir, I did.
You felt comfortable about it?
I believe so.
All right, any other discussion? All right, those are papers out.
Aye.
Those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not. Motion carries.
Recommend the Star Wars sales itinerant instructional coach for the system.
Chief, pardon my recommendation, have a motion. Mr. Wood makes a motion, I have a second.
I have a second.
Mr. Richards makes a second. Thanks for the, the, the job there. Do we have any other discussion? Those are papers out.
Aye.
Those opposed, not. I have those opposed, not.
Recommend Tim Barstool Robotics Instructor, career tech center.
Chief, pardon my recommendation, have a motion. Mr. Richards makes a motion, I have a second. Mr. Wood says, in discussion.
Good luck, Mr. Barstool, did a great job, his heart's in it, he's been very much involved and. involved, and had caused the tech school folks, Freddie was going to lose him, and this is where we're headed in technology, I mean, that's, if you spend a much smarter technology, we're going to be in a bad hurt, but that's where we're headed.
Any? Any other discussion? Those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Those aye, and I'd say a motion carries.
Recommend Caleb Beatty, secondary English teacher for one year leave at Ider.
Don't you part the recommendation, have a motion. Mr. Wood makes that motion, have a second.
Say.
Mr. Williams seconds, in discussion. Those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Those aye, and I'd say a motion carries.
Recommend Lawrence Schrader, secondary science teacher, Valley Gate.
Don't you part the recommendation, have a motion. Mr. Wood makes that motion, have a second. Also, Mr. Pepper seconds, in discussion. Those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Those aye, and I'd say a motion carries.
Recommend Mr. Ryan, CFP worker, Collison.
Don't you part the recommendation, have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Pepper makes a motion, have a second.
Say.
I don't give that to Mr. Wood. In discussion. Those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Those aye, and I'd say a motion carries.
Recommend Kathleen Randle, bus tech route across from Ider.
Don't you part the recommendation, have a motion. Mr. Pepper makes a motion, have a second.
Say.
Mr. Richards seconds, in discussion. Those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Those aye, and I'd say a motion carries.
Recommend Christopher Graves, pre-K auxiliary Higgin.
Don't you part the recommendation, have a motion. Mr. Richards makes a motion, Mr. Wood seconds, say good.
Yes.
In discussion. Those who favor say aye.
Aye.
I think Ms. Graves actually has an education degree, so it'll be very helpful. Those those aye, and I'd say a motion carries.
Recommend Tammy Smith, itinerary specialist, bus safety, Ider.
Don't you part the recommendation, have a motion. Mr. Wood makes a motion, have a second.
Say.
Mr. Williams seconds, in discussion. Those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Those aye, and I'd say a motion carries.
Recommend Sherry Piquet, nurse, Plankton.
We have, have a motion. Make a motion. Mr. Williams makes a motion, have a second. Mr. Pepper seconds, in discussion.
Is this person currently working in our system as a nurse? I know that it's not always the case, sometimes we have to go outside and give folks, but I know there's a lot of number one, A quality RNs in the system, and several of us, Kyle may want to transfer to plenty of you, and I just feel like that we had adequate personnel working for us that can, that want to transfer, so did you have any reason, Mr. Taylor, that you picked this one?
I did. This was the top two from Tony Richards and the top two from Ms. Pearson, but I was given two names and was told that they would be filed either one, so I put the coin in pick one.
Any other discussion? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Those those aye.
Aye.
The director Sheldon Bell is four one, but Mr. Richards, those aye, makes a second.
Recommend Chris Bowden, assistant custodian, Collison.
You skipped one. Number eight, okay.
Well, we had the trace, that's why, I just recommended one.
Okay, will I have a moment?
Yeah, I just, hey, you want me to just go back and do that?
Okay.
I'd like to recommend one in Yeland, itinerary specialist aid, we have youth and have they, have N X.
Don't you part the recommendation, have a motion.
Make a motion.
Mr. Williams makes a motion, Mr. Wood seconds, in discussion. Those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Those those aye, and I'd say a motion carries.
Recommend Chris Bowden, assistant custodian, Collison.
Don't you part the recommendation, have a motion. Mr. Pepper makes a motion, have a second.
Say.
Mr. Richards seconds, in discussion. Those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Those aye, and I'd say a motion carries.
Recommend Scotty Davis, bus tech route across from Ider.
Don't you part the recommendation, have a motion. Mr. Pepper makes a motion.
Say.
Mr. Richards seconds, in discussion. Those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Those aye, and I'd say a motion carries.
They're good together.
Yeah, I guess they're all those together.
All right, I'd like to recommend we enter into following contracts, Dale Tyree, Bus Garage, McKennie, that's level foot, funds source, Elizabeth Huntley, that's the speaker that's coming to the institute, that's level, following three, R I D A, B, special aid, milestones, behavior group, advisory consult services, Laura Ritchie, occupational therapy services, and Twin Acres physical therapy services, that's the institute services.
Okay, you part the recommendation, have a contract, have a motion. Mr. Wood makes a motion, have a second.
Say.
Mr. Richards seconds, in discussion. Those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Those aye, and I'd say a motion carries. The policies.
Okay, we've got ones to lay on the table for thirty days, the opening of school policy. We had a statement to read as in our possible to all DeKalb County schools loading doors for students and begin unloading buses at least twenty-five minutes of the starting time of school, and that's to ensure that all have the opportunity to get breakfast. So I'd like to recommend we accept that interim policies.
All right, you part the recommendation, have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, have a second. Mr. Wood seconds, in discussion. Those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Those aye, and I'd say a motion carries.
We have one other policy out of district students that we need to lay on the table for thirty days. We've been in contact, we have some students who have been picked up inside our school system, or above our school system that we're trying to correct, and we've met with superintendent and the transportation director, about Mr. Harrison's member, several times. The state has recommended that we adopt this policy, so we'll be able to enforce stopping that system, picking our kids up. We've been on, on actions of reaching agreement with them, so if we adopt this policy, we'll be able to enforce it and to be able to help the state if we can't get them to comply. This really deals with Cherokee County and the same wrong period, so I'd like to lay this on the table for thirty days, and let you guys look over it. And we've also had some issues, I think, with some transfers, making calls, and some things as well with Jackson County. So, we'd like to clean all this up and have, where we had some distinct lines, and have our district lines, we've had some issues with school buses and stuff. I think once we get all these borders cleaned up, we can start being a little more quicker to make decisions as far as who's on, on bus route.
Well, thank Mr. Haley, he's really working hard to do things.
So, we're going to lay that on table for thirty days, so there might be some time to bank it, give it a little more attention. I'd also like to ask for permission to place any court program, like we've got a couple of transfers, just like Rebecca Griffin and down in Collison, we got a few, we need some higher placement, any court program, so I'm on tax permission to do that.
All right, you've part the recommendation to place any court program, have a motion. Mr. Richards makes a motion.
Say.
Mr. Wood seconds, in discussion. Those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Those aye, and I'd say a motion carries. All right, board members, let me just do this, let me just read this, assistant career tech director. Whenever, whenever you have a situation where a relative or superintendent in the hottest reigning position, that according to our tardies, the applicants come to the chairman of board and the appoint, appoints someone too neutral to make those sort of decisions, and so what I did is ask Jonathan Phillips and Jason Mayfield to be part of the committee to interview those applicants. I think it was seven interviews, and now six in system, one out of system, but let me just read their report. That, that part of the process, they had to prepare a report, and took in it because of the nature of the, of a relative, he can't make a, an involvement. Anyway, it says, "On Monday, July twenty-fifth, twenty sixteen, Mr. Jason Mayfield and I, Jonathan Phillips, in interviews as committee for assistant career tech director, position is directed by Mr. Matt Sharp, chairman of the Kappa Kappa College of Education, we interviewed the following candidates, Mr. Tom Platten, Mr. Corey DeBrae, Dr. Stacey Hicks, Mr. Nathan Ledbetter, and Ms. Tina Wells, Mr. Jacob McKenzie, and Mr. Mitch Mitchell. We are pleased, as committee, we recommend Ms. Tina Wells for position of assistant career tech director. Mr. Jason Mayfield, I would like to thank you to the College of Education for the opportunity to serve the ward superintendent, warrant board, and students of the Kappa Kappa School System, signed by Mr. Mayfield and Mr. Phillips." So, with that, that's, that's a recommendation from them to the board, do we have a motion?
Make it.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, Mr. Wood seconds, in discussion. I think as far as process, are y'all good with the process of how we did it in that situation?
Thank you.
But I thought a committee would be the best way to communicate. All right, we have a motion, say. We have a, 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 those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Those aye, and I'd say a motion carries. All right, does any board members have anything they want to talk about?
Just one thing, if you're, Taylor, Mitch, if you want to go, about a designated kid of mouth is designated, we've looked on some other county websites, and they, they have their county, and they have a blue section that says, "These students goes to this school," and of course, I'm, I'm going to make known, but you guys, that's something y'all, y'all need to do, and, and in the future, it's just cut down a lot of fraud.
Just the way it is, you got it down, do you?
Yeah. You know, if you want to say, go down to this power line, actually, that wasn't a power line, they only crossed one down, toward which side of the power line you went on, lived on, where, where you went to school. But, I mean, that would really be beneficial, you know, down there.
She live on?
And, and another thing that'd be beneficial, this, this open enrollment thing, you know, we, we see all kinds of advertising, like pre-K signups and kindergarten signups, this should be advertised, because the, the local parents, they, they never hear anything about that.
It's in the paper.
Well, in, in all.
But not on the signs?
No.
I just saw it. But I see what you're saying, it could be on the school signs and collages.
Yeah. It could be somewhere. Put on Facebook, your Facebook. Your Mac can start tweeting if you do that.
I don't tweet, no, I don't tweet. That's good information, Mr. Taylor.
That is good.
I'm glad you talked about this on your last, your last couple of minutes.
Well, I belong to teachers' lives.
We, we, we look forward to that.
Yes.
Oh, we do, your last minute.
So, now you may, Mr. Taylor, I'm the, good. Mr. Richards, you got your name?
Yes, sir. Mr. Pepper.
Just encourage you, board members, anybody has opportunity to come to the service day
on August second. I've heard Liz Knightly speak, and you won't be disappointed, she has a great story, and I wish her, you know, I wish everybody could hear her story, it's a, it's a great story. There's other, you know, got Dr. Elko's comment, as well, too, but, but her stories, it's great stories. Hope you kind of think.
Mr. Richards, you want to talk about the, the service we had signed in kind of what, what they do at, at church?
Yeah, at Five Church of God, last Sunday, we recognized all the pastors and all everybody there, got, I think it was thirty, thirty-four baskets, and gave to all the teachers, and I think there's thirty-four teachers in comes Five Church of God, and they got, the baskets had a lot of stuff, and it turned out real good, we had a lot of people there, and we, we thanked the teachers, and we appreciate the hard work they did, because, you know, you go around the schools, sometime at five or six o'clock, the teachers are still working, and they're not getting paid for it, so they got, we on the call, and we, we thank them.
And Ray, you didn't have much influence about the loss to you, on your colleagues, you know about it, but you might have just talked about it.
Yeah, Nick Walls won a national championship, he'd already won in the state about a month ago, he went on to the nationals, he's a student across from high school, he's in an accident, about three years ago, I guess, four winter accident, broke his back, starting to get some strength back in, but he went on to, won the state, went on to the nationals, sets two national records, won two state, uh, two national championships in the shot foot and distance. And he placed second in another.
He finished second, too.
So, done outstanding job, very proud of him, working. He's going to be, we're looking for him to come back and reap the, he still got another year of high school, so looking for him to do big things again this year.
That's great.
Very, very proud of him.
I think he's been interviewed, invited to go to the parallel, and.
Yes.
Game spot, we're really excited for him, and if we can get him to come to institute, we might let him be there to give his, give his, give his, give his, give his.
That is good. Thank you for that. Uh, Mr. Wood, do you have anything else?
Yes.
All right, DEA.
DEA would like to say thank you to the board for providing this school, our new policy, and we would also like to say thank you for including the student orientation that we helped Thursday.
See what you have, you guys?
Just ready to hit the forum, and like all of you, it starts next week.
We, we feel like it's going to start for a while.
Yeah. Hey, Jeff, you got that?
Thank you for the opportunity to appreciate each night, and I know this sounds like a broken record, but have y'all forgotten which secretaries, or did you push it on the back burner, or flushed it, or what?
We intend on trying to have a work session soon, in the next month or so, trying to get, get something worked out. There's a lot of discrepancies about other systems, and the rate of pay, and along with the number of days that it works, and what I'd like to do is sit with the board and try to get a good round figure and make a proposal that would be fair to us, so, but that'll be it, probably, as we get schools started, we can set up a work session, we can discuss that.
I appreciate that very much, because I'm getting calls every day, you know, have they forgotten us, or the number three, four, or whatnot.
But we get a few calls, too. Our next meeting, I'm sorry, do you have, I guess?
Absolutely, thank you for including us in the, the student orientation, and, you know, having our share of the doubt, and everything else.
Thank you, thank you. Next meeting is the August twenty-fifth, six o'clock. We'll do that for the next couple of months.
Then you go back to the twelfth.
I'm going to have it whenever. All right, we have a motion adjourned. Hold on.
We'll start that meeting with a budget here, we have to have this budget here.
Okay, we'll have a budget, we have a budget here, and you have five before that, you have to remind us about that.
Okay.
All right, so a motion adjourned? Mr. Wood makes the motion, have a second. Those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Adjourned.